Okay, I'm calling the meeting to order. Afternoon, everyone. All right. This is our special board meeting. Are there any -- where are you? Oh, there you are. Any requests for public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to our discussion item, which is 2.1, where we're going to conduct a study session on student housing planning efforts and financing options with the intent of giving direction to management on the next steps moving forward. So with that, I am turning it over to the chancellor to kick things off.
Very good. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here and joining us for this special study session on student housing. And in particular, thanks to the board for your interest in student housing. I was looking back at all of the work we've done in our district related to student housing, and it's been very impressive over the last couple of years, I think since 2020, and then we had a little hiccup because of that thing called COVID. But we got back to it. And so, at the end of the day, I know the board has had several presentations regarding student housing, focused on a variety of issues related to student housing. I know you might recall, because again, it's been a couple of years, but we have conducted two student surveys. And we found from those student surveys that students were absolutely interested in student housing. We have a number of students who are eligible for student housing. And so, and this mirrors what we're seeing in the state. And so, just I wanted to point out, and we talked about this before, there's a new affordability, food and housing access task force report that was released in September of 2023. And that report, so interesting, found it actually surveyed, there were over 66,000 students who responded to this survey from 88 of the California community colleges. And almost three out of five students were identified as housing insecure. And about one out of four students were identified as homeless. And the matter has gotten worse since the pandemic. And so, and what, again, what we see here in the SOCCCD is that we have a number of students who are eligible for housing. We have a number of students who are low income. In fact, I pulled the numbers that we had a couple of years ago, and students who are eligible for Pell or Cal Grants or the California Promise Fee Waiver or AB 540. And IVC, over 5,000 students. And at Saddleback College, over 8,000 students. So again, there is a distinct need for student housing, not just in the state, but in our district and our community as well. So again, thank you to the board for your interest in student housing. And so, kind of going back as well, recall, we submitted two grant, construction grant applications to the state, one for Saddleback College and one for IVC. We got the results from Saddleback College, and unfortunately, it wasn't ranked high enough at the time. And then, we're waiting for the results for IVC. Since that time, the state made some changes. And namely, there are no longer construction grant monies for student housing. So we're left here with a distinct need for student housing, yet we do not have identified, we don't have monies identified for student housing. So this study session is designed to share with the board the options that we have to fund student housing moving forward. So with that in mind, I will go ahead and turn it over to Vice Chancellor Gable to get us started.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Barnes. And we have a panel of folks here that are going to help with the presentation tonight. So I'll go ahead and introduce them. Just going from my immediate right, we have our Executive Director of Facilities Planning for the District, Medhany Efrem. And then, we have, next to Medhany, Ted Risher from the Voels Company. And next to Ted is Anne Voels from the Voels Company. So they are helping us with the financing analysis and work on that. And they were also both involved with the feasibility study that we did. So to kick us off, we will be going over a little bit of a background, although Dr. Barnes covered a lot of that very well. So we'll be brief with the background. And then, Medhany will kind of be covering facilities planning and how it works at each of the colleges and what goes into that. Then we have, I'll be going over various financing structures that are available to the district that we can consider for financing or in funding student housing. And then, we have Ted will be going over the assumptions and the findings from the various financing runs, I would say. And then, we'll close it out with summary and next steps. So with that, I will turn it over to Anne. No, first, we have our goals and objectives. And so, we want to hear from both of the college presidents so that they can kind of give us the college perspective on the feelings for student housing. I don't know which one of you wants to begin.
I'll begin. So, thank you all for showing an interest in this and being willing to listen to us and wanting to learn more about this. We've been at this for a long time. Saddleback added housing to its facilities master plan approximately four years ago. There have been multiple discussions along the way, and there is consensus at the college about doing something about the housing issues. The priorities for us, and I think you'll see a lot of overlap between us and President Hernandez's presentation regarding Irvine Valley, is always been to address housing issues broadly. And when I say that, we really have to think about three different issues within that one that often gets overly inclusive and overly broad. First are people who are acutely homeless. So we do a broad survey of our students to ask if there's anything they need, food, anything from the pantry, technology, tutoring. And we ask a specific question. Do you suffer from acute homelessness? Are you homeless? And we ask them specifically in parentheses, either couch surfing, or living in your car, or living outdoors because you lack a home. This semester, approximately 250 students responded affirmatively to that question. That is acute homelessness among 250 or so students. There's another category, and Chancellor Barnes alluded to this in the housing insecure. Housing insecure would be people where housing, houselessness, homelessness may be imminent. They may be behind in their rent. They may be threatened with eviction. They may be living in an abuse situation, and they need to get out, or they've got a problem that maybe we can solve, maybe we can't. But we want to be there for them. And then, the third issue is affordability. This doesn't show up in surveys because the students we have are the students we have. But we know that many of the enrollment issues that are going around, not just here, but around the country, relate to affordability. Some of the largest enrollment declines around the country are in districts with the highest cost of housing, urban areas in particular, Seattle, Portland, Los Angeles, San Francisco. Those districts are suffering some of the largest decreases in enrollment, and it is related to the high cost of housing. That is to say, the students they serve can no longer afford to live within the service area that they support. So the third issue that our college would really like to address is affordability. And we know that nothing we do is going to solve that problem, only make a dent in it. But the first two concerns that you see listed on the deck here, basic needs concerns, really refer to both of the first ones, acute homelessness as well as housing insecurity. And then, the second point here is cost-effective housing, addressing the affordability issue. The third issue is student success and student support. So when we have housing, we can provide supports for students who are living in that housing directly at the housing. This has a cost, and you'll hear more about how that cost has been worked into the rents so that we can cover it. But having a residential environment where services are available right where students live makes it more likely that they will avail themselves of them. And finally, fostering diverse and inclusive communities. There is an advantage for those who are lucky enough to have an experience of, a residential experience in their college days. You know, there is a sense of community. There is a sense of being part of something and belonging that comes with living in university or college housing. And we would love our students to have that opportunity as well. And that creates good friendships and community that helps keep people actually retain and persist in our environments. So those are the priorities for us that we would like. Any solution to address, we hope. John?
Thank you. Very similar to Saddleback College. These goals and objectives that you see in the slide deck really served as guiding principles when we started engaging in serious conversations about basic needs, houselessness, and student housing, affordable student housing in particular. During the plant granting, planning grant process, that's when we started to identify priorities that we wanted to shape and frame the conversation. And that was true during the planning process as well as when the college engaged in the actual application that we submitted to the state with the hopes that, you know, we knew it was quite a long shot, but that we might have an opportunity to prepare the best application for the then-state grants for student housing. The reason providing cost-effective housing was prioritized, or really, I don't know that these were frankly listed in any priority order, but that really did stand above others, is that if we have housing, and yet it's not affordable, we're not meeting the basic needs. And so, the affordability aspect was so important. And you've seen that in the various presentations that have been made here, particularly with the P3 private-public partnerships, where at this point in time, if we had pursued that option, we would be charging above-market rates, which again, seems to defeat the purpose of affordability. As Dr. Barnes and Dr. Stern mentioned, tying basic needs is so directly correlated to student success. And the ability of students to be able to meet their basic needs does impact their academic success at our colleges. IVC has seen an overwhelming increase, as many of you heard when you did the facilities tour and when we went to our Food Resource Center at Irvine Valley College. Our basic needs program continues to evolve, and it has morphed to much more than just a food resource center. We have, as, just as a summary of what we shared on that tour, we have this whole case management approach. We have graduate interns from Cal State Fullerton who are completing their masters in social work, who work with students to look at their immediate needs. Usually, when a student comes in and they are food insecure, what we have found is that there are multiple basic needs and securities that go along with it. So it's so important that we take this wraparound case management approach to connect them to community resources, to referrals and so forth. We do have some immediate short-term assistance. We have housing vouchers for up to six days at local hotels where we have contracts. The Veterans Services Center has similar services. And so, we understand that the student's success and how we impact and increase student retention. It's also important to note that we have, the most vulnerable students on our campuses are the ones that are often impacted the most by basic needs. Low-income, formerly, students that were formerly in foster care. Students who have served in the military are veteran students, students on the autism spectrum and so forth. And so, if we're going to be serious about student success, we are, we feel a commitment to also address the holistic aspect of a student. And then, to the point, and I know Dr. Barnes referenced the CEO affordability, housing, and other needs task force report, that report found that students that are most impacted are reporting non-passing college grades at 20 to 25 percentage points higher. In other words, students with basic needs are not performing academically. They're not passing at the same rate as students who have those needs met. So it has been, it has been actually very invigorating to engage in these conversations in our town halls. And much of the conversation focused on, what can we do now, and what does the future hold? And then, lastly, I think the managing, the financial risk was important both for the colleges, I know it is for the board, that whatever options are considered and pursued, that they be financially responsible, that they don't put us at a high financial risk. And of course, when we engage in these conversations, we were all very hopeful that, you know, the state would have these grants. And of course, now the landscape has changed. So I'm looking forward to engaging and hearing the conversation today about options that this board might consider to help both colleges meet such critical, important needs for our students.
All right. Thank you. So now, we'll turn it over to Anne, who will go over a little bit of the background of what our survey results that we did resulted in.
Absolutely. So as you heard earlier, there were two surveys that were performed, and of course, many of you were a part of hearing those findings. But these slides are here just to take us back to everything we're hearing, is that there is demand, significant demand, if you look to the right column. When we say SB 169, those are the students that would qualify as low-income students. But we also looked at, and it'll be more applicable when you hear the financing structures. We looked at a little bit higher rents. And then, we even went to public-private partnership standalone rents. So tiered rents to see what the demand was. And of course, only your low-income students did see that for the SB 169 rents. But significant demand, we can go to the next slide. And then, just really going back to now, as we honed in more for the grant, and looking specifically at your students from both colleges, of course, this is Saddleback's demand. But, and also too, going to the comment about managing financial risk, is a lot of time and attention, as it should be, was responsibly paid to make sure that the total cost of ownership was accounted for, so that your housing is not putting any of the general fund or any other source at risk. So that's why there was a supplemental survey, really honing in on a little bit higher grant, but still staying within those thresholds for the grant requirements. And as you can see, 770 beds at Saddleback. It's so interesting. We go to the next slide. To me, this is the demand between both colleges is really similar. So it profiles almost on the P3 or within like two different people. So anyway, very, very similar demand. Here, you can see again at IVC, and we also grouped ATEP in with that. But demand from all different, which is a diverse student housing community too, is bringing together people with different demographic backgrounds and means. If we go to the next slide? Same thing here, of course, is when the supplemental survey, 658 low-income students of demand at the rents that you see when we have the SB 169 rents. We will use very conservative filters with these demands. So just as a reminder, when you say yes, you don't automatically move into the demand. There's a lot of filters and a lot of calculations that go into these numbers to make sure there's a lot of integrity. And I didn't point out, but on every single slide, we always want less than 5% of a margin of error, and you were more about 2.5. So feel very confident in the findings. If you go to the next slide? We've talked about it. Chancellor Barnes opened up with this is, unfortunately, is the economy has changed, and so has the state grant. And so, the budget that did come out earlier this year really changed the funding to a local lease revenue bond. And this was even affecting those that have already been awarded the grant. So essentially, we don't have the money, at least right now. There's a bill. There's been a lot of advocacy, and I do appreciate all the advocacy, and I'm sure all of you are a part of that, to, just to reiterate more of what we're hearing about our homeless students, our housing insecure students, and how it directly affects that student's success. I think our government has listened, at least, from the, what we're seeing, and potentially, there will be a statewide bond. But the bottom line on this slide is that we cannot rely on any of this grant funding. So that's why I'm going to turn it over to the next slides and talk more about, well, I won't, but Vice President Gable will, about different financing structures because we do not believe from everything that we can count on the grant.
Great. So now, we'll follow into the facilities planning portion. So this slide here, we did share, it's probably familiar to some of you. We did share it at our board tour. It speaks to the participatory governance review process, starting from the college, at the college level, all the way through the district participatory governance review. So as you can see from the dates, IVC started their process in October, and it goes through November, and then, College Council in December. And then, respectively, at Saddleback College, resource request submissions in November, in December CRC, and then, Consultation Council in January. And then, it comes to the district-level committees. So we're starting that process now. A lot of what we're going to be sharing today, options-wise, we're also going to be going through that process to make sure all the groups, everyone gets to see it and review it and discuss it through. So again, when it gets to the district participatory, it goes to KIC, and then, DRAC after that. And then, obviously, it comes to the board for final approval in April. Next slide, please. So this is the basic aid-only option, if housing was introduced and funded by basic aid-only option. So the first slide deck that you see are projects currently that are funded, pre-funded, either are in design. And so, these are projects that are going to start. So they're, the, these projects are in the go, if you will, right? The last two projects, the instructional building aquad, FPP, Saddleback College Fine Arts Complex, FPP. Just a reminder, FPPs are, it's a, you know, stands for final project proposals. It's a process that we follow, we have to follow with the state chancellor's office in requesting for state funds. So those two projects are, we are requesting for state funds. Next slide, please.
Medhany?
Yes?
Give him a detail of what each of the colors mean in the boxes, so they have an understanding of what that timeline is referring to.
Correct. So this is right out of our cash flow Gantt chart, if you will, from our facilities master plan. So the blue would mean it's in bid. Orange is construction, and then, red is closeout. But if you go lower there, for example, the greenhouse biology and horticulture, the yellow stands for DSA, projects in DSA review. Let me see if there's any other. So I'll start from the bottom, sorry. But the purple would be planting. Green would be design. Yellow would be DSA, and then so forth. We just mentioned with the same colors. Thank you, Emery. So this next slide, our projects kind of further out a bit, starting at 25, 26. These projects include now, we've added the student housing projects into the mix, if you will. We've, we've had to, in order for this to work, if you will, to make it basic aid only, we've had some projects that had to get pushed out to make it fit in that schedule. Currently, at IVC, you see IVC student housing starting at 27, 28, planning. But IVC wanted to make sure also that the FPP and IPP projects were done first as well. Similarly, same thing with Saddleback. But the difference with Saddleback is that the SSC renovation project had to be completed first before the student housing project could start. There's a little of a domino effect with that project. Next slide, please. So this shows the cash flow, essentially. So on any given year, our cash flow, you know, if you look at our trend, if you will, it's anywhere between 60 to 70-something million dollars. And so, in order for us to get funded, that's what we've been getting every year. If you look at the left column there, basic aid funded, estimated April 2023, that is what the board approved last April, the cash flow, that is, right? And so, when we went out and showed the five, seven-year outlook, that's what the cash flow showed. And the blue line being where IVC would start, the red, maroon, where Saddleback Student Housing would start. So as you can see, when you look at years like 25, 26, 27, 28, that's well above our normal annual cash flow. So what we've done here is adjusted to show what would get us to the $70 million. So we adjusted it, and then, did a revised basic aid column on the far right to get us to what we believe, potentially, what we might be getting that year on average. So that's, I think, an important note to make. So again, as I mentioned earlier, to make the IVC student housing, Saddleback Student Housing projects fit in our facilities master plan, we've had to kind of push some projects forward in order to really make the cash flow work for us. Next slide, please. So again, typical funds on any given year range are trending between 60 to 78 million. Some projects were moved out. As I mentioned, these are just some of the projects that we had to push out. We assume receipt of state funding, right? So when we do these cash flows, we are assuming we're going to get enough funds for our state-funded projects. So that's very important to know. And again, some of the projects that, on the first slide, were pre-funded to make this work as well. The second bullet, I think, is an important note. The, this, this option, these options that we're sharing with you today have really, on a high level, been discussed at the college. It's really preliminary discussions. The real discussions start really with the participatory governance process that we talked about earlier on my first slide. And so, in the next several months, we're going to be, at the college level, the colleges are going to be meeting with their committees, and at the district level, once it gets to the KIC and DRAC, we'll be going through that process as well to make sure all the projects get approved as well with them. So as we stated before, IVC, right now, tentatively is, with this option, is slated to begin 27, 28, housing, with housing, with the housing opening 31, 32. Saddleback, planning beginning 30, 31. Again, we have to wait for the Saddleback renovation project to complete. That's a very important component due to the domino effect. And then, with the housing opening 34, 35. The, these budgets that you're seeing are very similar budgets that you saw in the past with our construction grants. So IVC, the cost would be 75 million. Saddleback would be a little under 104 million for that project. This really limits the future flexibility of our, you know, facilities planning, obviously. These are large projects. Next slide? Thank you.
All right. So moving into the various, I would say, alternative financing structures that potentially could be available to the district if we wanted to go down that path. We have, first up, general obligation bonds. So a general obligation bond is something that you put on the ballot for the voters of the district to vote on. We would be limited to $25 per 100,000 of assessed valuation. And so, there's a whole calculation on how much you can go out for a bond related to that. They are tax-exempt bonds. And if, if we wanted to, the bond statement has to include language that we would have student housing in there. So there's a whole lot of stipulations and requirements of how you word your bond statements, what you put in, all of your documents, you know, how you calculate how much the bond is. So those are kind of the key characteristics. It is, as I said, tax-exempt bonds. The voters would be paying for it on an annual basis out of their property taxes, is kind of where that money is funded from. The benefits of it, it's very low cost of borrowing because they are tax-exempt debt. And the district maintains complete control, obviously, over the housing project because we are utilizing the funds, and it is our funds to build the projects. The drawbacks is that the bond debt would now show up on our audited financial statements. So you'll see in a couple of weeks, and those of you who were at the audit subcommittee meeting, the auditors mentioned how we have a positive net position. And the reason we have a positive net position is because we have no debt. If we issued general obligation bonds, our positive net position would probably now be negative, like almost every other district in the state that has issued general obligation bonds. And then, bonding is limited based upon the district for all debt incurred. So it could potentially limit capacity for other borrowing, although for our district, since we don't have any debt, since we don't have any debt, that's not as much of a drawback. The next uh financing alternative that we looked at are certificates of participation. So this is a debt instrument that the district issues. Uh, you have to have a revenue stream when you go out to issue this debt of how it's going to be repaid. And then the district has to make a commitment that if that revenue stream, so in this case, it would be the rents, the rent revenue from the student housing. If the rent revenue was not able to cover the debt service, then the district's general fund would be required to make that debt service payment. With a certificates of participation or COPS, is what we call them for short, we would have to secure that debt um with collateral of, you know, assets of the district, so a building or, or something within the district that we would have to secure the debt with. And this would reduce the number of low-cost units that we would be able to provide. So basically what that means is since we're gonna, now going to have debt that we have to repay, we wouldn't have, have the ability to have is as many units at the lowest rent rate because, in order to cover the cost of the debt. Some of the benefits of a COPS, obviously, the rental rates that we could charge would be lower than those of a P-three structure. Um, we would um receive any of the excess revenue that was generated from the student housing project. So if the rents less the debt service, less all the expenditures, you know, if you had a profit, then the district or the colleges would be able to keep that excess revenue. Um, it's required to, when we say cash flow on its own, that means pay for this own debt service. And it would allow us to continue with our facilities master plan implementation and give us a little bit more flexibility on that implementation um since it, it wouldn't all be covered with basic aid. The drawbacks are that there's interest in debt payments, obviously. Um, if the student housing rent wasn't able to cover the debt service payment, then it would, as I said, a basic aid contribution or another means of the general fund. And then it could limit our capacity for other borrowing down the road. Next slide, please. Public-private partnership, you know, we have discussed this in the past. Um, this arrangement is where we would enter into an agreement with a private developer. The private developer would construct the um facility for us. The facility is typically owned by a five oh one C-three, who would then enter into a ground lease with the college. And the college would, so similar to how we do ATEP with the ground leases, this would be an A, a ground lease with the developer that the college would be getting the revenue from the ground lease. Uh, with the P-threes, the colleges are required to provide some means of support, whether it be financial support or um, you know, however it's structured, but there typically is something that the colleges have to agree to do there. And then um another characteristic is that the housing does revert to the college upon expiration of the ground lease. The benefits of a P-three partnership are the bonds are sold to finance the project, are a liability of the housing owner, so that's really the developer, because remember the college is the ground lease or. The college can still participate in the major decisions. And then any excess surpluses are paid to the college as additional rent. The drawbacks, which are the, the biggest drawbacks right now, are the high cost of financing, um which causes the market rental rates are, in some cases, higher than market rental rates. And in today's market, as, you know, we mentioned, a year ago, the interest rates had gone up a little bit to make the P-three no longer feasible. Well, now the rates are, you know, topping at seven percent. So P-threes really are not feasible at all at this point in time until interest rates were, come down significantly. There's less control in times of distress. Um, the college is liable for some of the pre-development spend before they enter into the agreement with the developer. And then there's pledged credit support, so those are kind of the drawbacks there. The next thing that we looked at, which um just came about with the Budget Act of twenty-two thirty-three, is this concept of a zero-interest loan that the state of California would award to colleges. Um, they have determined that the California School Finance Authority will be the ones that are administering these loans. We don't know exactly what is going to be in the applications, but the applications are due out no later than April first, twenty-two forty. Um, I've seen a preliminary look of what will, the applications will entail. Um, but it's basically just kind of following the codes that were established to create these zero-interest loans. Once the applications come out, uh, they will be due on July first, twenty-two forty. There's only fifty million dollars available in twenty-two forty, and then there would be seventy-five million pledged each year thereafter for five years. Um, within the Budget Act, you know, over the, that six-year period, it was about one point seven billion dollars in one-time funding that they were saying they wanted to allocate towards this. Twenty-five percent of that would be for community colleges. The benefits is that it's no cost to the district for borrowing funds. The district would control the development process. Um, and then it's, it is a long-term loan. I think the drawbacks are, is um that it would require additional contribution from the district. There's only fifty million dollars on a statewide basis. That's not going to cover the cost of even one of our student housing projects. You know, you might be lucky to get ten million dollars. I think the intent of the state is to give the zero-interest loans to several districts and try to make that fifty million dollars go as far as it can. So there's not going to be a whole lot of funding available, which means we would have to finance, you know, another aspect of that. Um, it could be extremely competitive and difficult to receive, kind of what I just addressed. And um there are extensive stipulations around the zero-interest loan on how you go out to bid, who you can hire as a contractor, reporting that you have to do. So a zero-interest loans comes with a lot of strings attached from the state. Next slide. So now I'll turn it over to Ted to kind of go over the assumptions that we used uh when we were trying to come up with prospectus.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Um, as far as the programs for each uh campus go, you'll find that we use the exact same program that were developed uh for use in the SB one sixty-nine applications. So this is a reiteration of, of some things you've already seen. Saddleback College, four hundred beds, a total building envelope of about eighty-five thousand square feet with a budget of just over a hundred million dollars. Those are adjusted dollars uh using the Chancellor's Office's formula, formula for SB one sixty-nine. Uh, those were, those were confirmed through the use of a cost estimator and, and Gensler when we were developing these programs. So four hundred beds at Saddleback, three hundred and then twenty beds at Irvine Valley College, similar building envelope, less cost because uh not as much uh extensive site work. Uh, so those are repeats of numbers you've seen in the past. We want to keep everything as comparable as possible to what you've seen already. Uh, next slide. Um, really the big difference between the uh methods that Anne Marie just summarized are really, as she said, the cost of funds uh as well as the debt service coverage requirements. Uh, at the top, uh, you can see that the highest cost of funds we underwrote were, were the P-three and even at tax-exempt rates. And we spoke with several of the desks at the underwriters that we work with on a continual basis, um, taking into account the, the credit worthiness of South Orange County and uh as well as some of the current um fluctuations in the debt markets. You know, six and a half percent, we felt was fair for the P-three. Uh, obviously, we're not looking at any of these types of aspects for the local sources. For the COPs, we thought five percent was a good uh assumption. And then for the combined financing approach, which really combined the issuance of COPs along with some local sources, uh, obviously that cost of money is a blended rate. Um, the term we really looked at for all the indebted options was forty years. Um, that's pretty standard for a P-three. Um, it's our understand, understanding that it's similar for COPs, so we made that assumption. Usually you're looking at two or three years of construction financing followed by a thirty-seven or thirty-eight year amortization period for the balance of the debt. Uh, the credit pledges that are necessary for each of those, Anne Marie went through. Uh, another big drawback of the P-three scenario is that investors require a significant amount of coverage on the debt service for their bonds. So for every, you know, million dollars of debt service, you need one point two million dollars of, of uh net operating income to cover that. Uh, one of the benefits of the COPs, at least in the debt world, is that because the college or the district is standing behind the repayment of the debt, uh, you can underwrite that coverage down to basically just operating costs and debt service. Next slide. So some of the uh assumptions on the combined uh approach, obviously, uh, we're covering um about forty percent of the hard costs. It's thirty-six million for Saddleback, twenty-five million for IVC. The balance of the project costs are being paid through the issuance of COP debt. Uh, and the rents that we were able to achieve are actually about uh sixty percent of those required by the uh hundred percent P-three debt. So a, a material reduction, whether or not that's meeting the objectives is, is up for discussion. Next slide. So here's some of the findings. Um, at the top line, you'll see Saddleback and Irvine College are, are split there. At the top line, you can see the project costs. You can really see that the hard and soft costs remain constant for each approach. And so what you can really see are the difference in the financing costs for these two approaches. Uh, you can see an extraordinary sort of reduction in the cost of the P-three versus the COPs, and that's really due to the reduction uh in capitalized interest and associate and, and the absence of having to fund a debt service reserve fund for the COPs. Uh, it's a similar cost for the combined approach. Obviously, the local uh funding, that's really just hard and soft costs on an escalated basis. So you can see that this, the disparities there. Owing to not only the uh higher cost of funds and the coverage requirement for the P-three, that's going to have the highest debt service. You can see the difference there. Uh, obviously, nothing for the local because we don't have any debt and for the combined approach, um, because we're subsidizing uh a material part of the hard costs with the local contribution, our debt services is uh, is reduced there as well. Um, the residual cash flow after operating costs.
Can I ask, can I ask a quick question?
Please.
The, these numbers don't look like, how is Saddleback cost more, but the residual cash flows? I'm, I'm having a hard time seeing where these match up.
Because we're actually using, on the P-three approach, we're actually using residual cash to generate a reimbursement for the college overhead that was calculated.
Okay, so because Irvine Valley College costs less.
Mm-hmm.
You have more residual cash flow.
Right. Uh, also, I will say this, we normalize the rents for each campus, and so um IVC produces more residual cash flow because it's charging more rent than it would have to on its, on a underwriting basis. Um, so you can see the differences there. The residual cash flows, I, I want to remind everybody too that for each of the two campuses, we factored in the cost, the additional cost of uh each college's overhead in terms of bringing on additional FTEs uh to be able to support uh student, uh student living on each campus. Uh, so all these, all these numbers account for that cost as well. You can see the same trends for Irvine Valley College, slightly uh smaller costs due to reduced site work, uh, but the trends stay through to uh, through all four approaches. Next slide. So here are the rents, and again, uh, we present these as findings from the analysis. Uh, the P-three rents, and these are standardized for both campuses, um, with IVC producing some more residual cash flow because of the standardization. Um, you know, they're significant, and, and this is really due to the high cost of, of borrowing uh and for other types of requirements for investors in this type of uh, in this type of paper. You know, twenty-four hundred for a traditional double, it includes, uh, it includes utilities, but we're not here saying that that really fits the bill. Twenty-four hundred through thirty-two hundred uh for the double, single, and studio. You can see the material reduction by doing the COPs, about six hundred dollars per bed. Uh, and in the combined approach, again, another reduction of about four hundred dollars per bed, so about a forty percent reduction from the P-three rates. Um, the local rates are obviously going to be the most competitive because essentially what we're trying to do here is, is create a break-even scenario that allows us to operate and fund reserves for the property, cover college overhead, and, and really, at least not initially, just break even. Uh, next slide. These are some comparables for some other projects that have recently been completed. Santa Rosa just delivered and leased. Uh, Orange Coast College is more of an apartment product. Uh, they do have a studio uh unit in that, uh, in that development that leases for about twenty-two hundred dollars a month. Uh, Santa Rosa just delivered and leased up. Uh, Napa Valley College is still in development, but those are the underwriting rents uh for those units as well. So we're still looking at, um, you know, even with the combined approach, uh, which if we were to debt the project, we would deem to be the most feasible of these options. Uh, we're still coming in pretty, uh, pretty, uh, pretty over those rents. And that's really due to the increased illiquidity in the debt markets combined with uh the rise in borrowing costs. Santa Rosa and Napa uh were able to obtain uh debt financing for much cheaper. Next slide. Uh, this is an example of an approach we've used on similar projects. These numbers are actually off. We were working on this up until the last minute. Uh, suffice it to say that if we're allowed to access a band of students that could potentially uh afford to pay a little more, uh, we can essentially push about sixty percent of the units down below the rents you just saw in the combined approach. It's a, we can use this in any number of ways to try and uh create kind of a bespoke rent roll, but it's a way we can generate some affordability either on a broad basis or at a targeted basis in any project we do. Next slide. And just real quick, in terms of a summary of these financing structures, the cost of funding, it's always going to be higher on the P-three side. Going to the market um right now is just cost prohibitive. And this is an issue that's facing uh a vast number of your colleague institutions. Everybody's facing this kind of uh, this kind of pressure in terms of accessing the private debt markets. Uh, and that really makes the viability of these types of projects really called into question. P-three, you know, P-three is just not viable because it's not producing the kind of affordability the majority of your students need. Um, the zero-interest loan, because of the highly competitive nature and because of the fact that we believe CSFA is going to dole that out in small pieces, really to serve as kind of like bridge financing for some of these projects, I don't think it's something we can count on. Uh, by the way, we did not underwrite uh any CSFA funds through that revolving loan fund into any of those rents, so those are without that. Uh, so really, from, from a viability perspective, uh, we see the COPs and especially a blended approach with COPs and local funds as being the most viable of these approaches. Next slide. Um, so again, we didn't underwrite any of the zero-interest loans because we can't say for certain that we'll be able to access them. Everything behaved the way we thought it was going to behave. Obviously, the highest cost, uh, the highest cost financing approaches produce the highest rents. Um, we really believe in that sort of dynamic rent roll, especially if some of your students can afford to pay a little more. Uh, as long as what they're paying is still below market, when you look at it combined with utilities costs, we think that's a, that's a great way to accentuate the affordability uh if you do go to market with whatever approach you go to market with. Um, but really to achieve true affordability, the most local funds that could be contributed to these projects are going to produce the most, you know, the, 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 the most affordability in terms of rents. Next slide.
Great, so the next few slides are very similar to the, the previous slides I, I shared with you all, except this would be from a financing uh approach. Um, this first slide here is identical to the uh, the slide we shared earlier, so nothing changes. So in a financing option, uh, these projects still would, would move on, the, the schedule wouldn't change. Um, thank you, Mary. Um, here, as you can see, if you've noticed, uh, with the financing option, um, it allows us to move up uh closer, accelerate, if you will, the Saddleback student housing by two years. Um, so that, that gives us that advantage. With the financing option, we still, uh, you know, projects still had to be shifted forward. That didn't change. Um, but it does allow us to bring up uh the Saddleback student housing. Uh, so as you can see here, it, it, Saddleback student housing moved up to twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Again, the revised basic aid funds are, you know, estimating what uh basic aid funds would be. be available in the seventies, if you will, seventy million. And if you look at the far right column, it would be the, what the need would be. So if you look at in the years where student housing starts and forth after that, it's in the ninety-two, ninety-seven, one hundred and twenty-one, ninety-one million, way above what we have. So the gap, the funding gap that we see in that middle column is what would be potentially financed. And so that totals up to about a hundred and seventeen million dollars. Next slide, please. So again, as, as I mentioned, the, it's a, the need would be about a hundred and seventeen million dollars approximately to finance. The IVC schedule would not change, but as I mentioned, the Saddleback project would be accelerated by a couple of years. Still would have to be, the planning would have to start after the SSC renovation because again of the domino effect. Again, the funds needed are anywhere between sixty-five to seventy-five million. Again, projects were shifted again similarly to the basic adoption to make this work. And I think more importantly, once again, the FPPs and IPPs, we are assuming receipt of state funds, right? So that's a critical note. And then the project slated for twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty-two, thirty-three will require adjustment or and or shifting to stay within the project available funds for that. So that's critical.
So as far as the summary and the next steps, you know, what we were trying to do with both of those Gantt charts and looking at the cash flows was living with the facilities master plan as it exists today and honoring that whole process that we went through when those were developed and each year, how they've been updated and prioritized by the campuses, and then trying to say, okay, well, where can we weave in student housing, either paying for it all ourselves using basic aid funds, or if we wanted to issue certificates of participation to help with that, how would that impact the schedule? So, you know, all of this is very, I would say speculative based upon our current facilities master plans as well as the priorities that had come through as of last year. And as we mentioned, you know, the facilities master plan kind of changes every year as the campuses look at it and as their needs evolve and change with what is happening on their instructional programs. So when we say in here on the pros and cons, under the basic aid option, that second con, that it limits our ability to change the FMP for future needs, that's kind of what we're referring to. Because we built all of these scenarios on the FMP as it exists today and how we could put it, slide student housing in with the available funds that we anticipate moving forward. But just kind of go over in general, the basic aid option, the pros, obviously, is no debt is incurred. We would be able to establish those rent prices, which would be considerably lower than market. They would be closer to the SB one sixty-nine rates, which is considerably below market, fifty percent of thirty percent of the median. And then the district would control the timing and the finances. The cons to that is that some of the facilities master plan projects are negatively impacted by having delay, to delay several projects that came in later years, and that the housing projects were pushed out to accommodate the cash flow needs. Under the financing approach, and the financing approach, remember, it's not a hundred percent financed. The assumptions that we used was that we would be financing a hundred and seventeen million with sixty-one million coming out of basic aid. So the financing is really kind of a combined approach where it is still basic aid, but also financing. We would be able to escalate the timing for Saddleback College, as Manhany mentioned, by a couple of years. It uses fewer basic aid dollars. But then the, the cons, of course, is we would have to issue debt. In this instance, in this estimation, in today's dollars is about a hundred and seventeen million dollars. It would limit our ability to set rent prices because they would have to be a little bit higher to ensure that we were covering the debt service repayment amount with those rents. And again, it's going to change the FMP to delay several of the projects in order to fit it in. So with that, we kind of turn it over and open it up for discussion on what is the board's preference on what, where we go from this point.
All right. Well, thank you all for that comprehensive presentation and comments. Open it up now to board questions. Trustee Whit, Ray Dell.
You mentioned, and I forget which one of you said it, that Santa Rosa, their debt financing was a lot cheaper. Why would that be?
It was, we took Santa Rosa to market pre-pandemic, and the markets, I mean, I think.
It closed in July of twenty-twenty-one. And rates, we got in right at a really good time, like, it was less than four percent. So.
Can you turn your mic on?
I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. It, Santa Rosa closed in July of twenty-twenty-one. I don't remember the exact rate, but it was right under four percent.
Lucky.
Yes.
Another aspect that has, that we used for both Santa Rosa and Napa was we were able to issue additional debt off the residual cash flow that was being produced, and that market no longer exists. And so we've taken sort of a double hit, not only in the doubling of the borrowing costs, but the absence of an, an additional way to issue debt off of money the project was making anyways, so.
So in layman's speak, what that means is they issued a second loan. Kind of like when you take a second out on your house, they took a second out on their student housing project.
That it? One question? You good? No, I'm, I'm asking trustee Whit Ray Dell, if she has other questions.
Oh, when you asked about that, the con, the construction project, et cetera, we give it to a contractor. And do we have any control over, of what he, she would? I'm going to give you the example. I've recently found out about a construction project that everything was going well, yada, yada. And then they find out, and I don't know how, the person in charge did not know, that the contractor developed a floor plan, whatever the, the buildings, that those buildings, the products he was going to use have to be, have to be used by a union workers, had to be used by this, had to be used by that. And they were planning on the neighboring towns, et cetera, using the products that were there. Is that kind of example a problem for us? I don't think so, but I'm thinking, I'm just asking, because it's huge. It stopped everything.
No, it wouldn't be. It would, you know, we would enter into the agreement with the developers, so we would specify the terms that go.
We would. Okay. Well, they were kind of dumb not doing that then. Yeah. Okay.
Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, so, going over a lot of things here. So the statement was made a couple of times about how we want to prioritize student success. We have issues with facilities master plan on, on projects that have priority over the housing. And I'm kind of wondering why we can't, so why isn't student success the highest priority? And if housing is shown to be more important for student success, I'm having a hard time with that. I, I, I kind of want to hear why we can't just jump it forward. Because, because thirty-two, thirty-three, I don't even know if I'll be around in that time.
I, I could start. If you see from the chart, the various stages that the existing projects are in, many of them are already in design, you know, moving forward. So we already have quite a few projects in the queue. And then, as you know, we talked about the IPPs and the FPPs, the initial project proposals and final project proposals, where we get state funds. And we've been very successful with those state funds. So typically, we don't want to leave millions of dollars of state funds on the table that have been issued. So basically, it's starting after those projects that are in the queue, plus the state, state monies that are in the queue as well.
That makes sense. Okay.
So, second, part of the unique need for Saddleback, this is not the case for IVC, but for us, is the site of the future housing is the village. And the village portables will be the swing space for several renovation projects yet to come, meaning when we build a new PE complex, everyone from PE will move into the village. When we build a new fine arts complex, everyone will move in the village. And finally, when we renovate SSC, everyone will move in the village. So we don't have that land available until those three projects are available. And the third thing I would say, using Chancellor Barnes as the first reason, will go most directly to your question. You are absolutely right that success is the highest priority and that building housing will likely make four hundred students more successful. But it is also true that building new educational buildings and building a new PE complex and building a new fine arts complex that gives students a university experience, that gives them an environment where they belong, where they feel important, where they feel like they deserve this kind of education, is also important to student success.
Okay, thank you. And then, I, I'm kind of trying, so based on that timeline, whether we do the combo or the basic aid only, and, and knowing that we have an immediate need, do we have any kind of a plan for, in the meantime? Like, like you mentioned vouchers for certain, is there a way that we can increase what we offer to our students that need a place to be beyond six days in a hotel? Is there a way we can justify putting them into an apartment, but helping subsidize their rent at a cost to us that, that helps them? I, I, I just don't know if thirty-two, thirty-three is going to help anybody. I mean, they're only here for two years, if they're going on the right track. What are we doing for them now? Or can we do more for them now? Is really where I'm at.
I really welcome the question. We have used here funds, and before that, CARES money, to provide subsidies for students with housing issues in particular. And being able to give people a couple thousand dollars means sometimes making the difference between somebody being evicted and somebody not. As those dollars run out, we are struggling to find a replacement for that money. And neither of the foundations is in a position to fully meet the needs for urgent grants, as we call them. So I would welcome that discussion. There is one hurdle, and that is gift of public funds. There is, as Vice Chancellor Gable can talk more about, if you're interested, a possible workaround, but that is one of the barriers that we would be encountering.
Got it.
Trustee Prendergast, I just wanted to add, and I really appreciate both questions that you just raised. The Band-Aid approach, I'll, I'll say it that way, six days is obviously not a long-term solution. We're continuing to explore multiple opportunities. For example, the city of Irvine, we're in conversations now. The city of Irvine, apparently, cities that have been deemed large cities have access to, it's called homeless housing assistance and prevention programs. The city received six million one-time funds, and ten percent of those funds, a minimum ten percent, have to be focused with homeless youth twelve to twenty-four. So we're in conversations now, along with Irvine Unified School District, to partner with the city to receive additional funds and resources, which again, helps with subsidies, rapid rehousing, service coordination, system support. So we're going to continue to explore whatever means become available to partner and leverage with other public entities and nonprofits to help us in the interim. So just know that we're, we're constantly pursuing any leads that are made aware, just so that we can continue to, to really provide a more meaningful solution that isn't just a quick one-time. Okay, so, so follow me here. This goes full circle. If we find a way to help now, then our timeline for finishing is not as urgent, to where we can make a conscious decision of, is it better to do the combined, or is it better to do the basic aid only? And know that we're taking care of the problem as a whole, rather than kicking it down. And so for me, I'm, I'm open to whatever the other trustees are interested in. But if I know that they're being taken care of now, I don't feel the urgency to borrow. But if it's the will of the board, let's do it. But I, I, I really feel that we have to find a way to do it now, and then make a more perm, like, a bigger Band-Aid. I mean, you're doing Band-Aid now, but let's get, let's get a gauze pad and tape, let's take care of it, and then find that permanent solution for them. Yes.
Love the idea. I just want to stay sober and keep everyone sober about the idea. We would be addressing homelessness in the short-term solutions with urgent grants, which make a huge difference in acute homelessness. If we can keep somebody, get somebody their security deposit in first months, it makes a huge difference. We would not be addressing housing insecurity or unaffordability in our area. We would be putting that off until the long term, and I have no issue with that. I just want to put that on the table. To be clear, we would be addressing one of the issues of housing concerns with the short-term problem. And I have to, to tell you, trustee Prendergast, we're not talking about that much basic aid money. We were, the, the, the current needs that are coming up in our student survey grant are about a half million to a million dollar a year, a year in urgent need grants. That's really what, you know, that much basic aid could put us in a position by augmenting the foundation funds to be able to meet the needs of the students who have urgent needs, that day needs to stay in their homes or to find a home.
So I guess I didn't communicate properly then. I want to take care of both. I want to find a way that we can help housing insecurity and urgent need now. There, there, we, we have to be able to figure that out. There's some smart people in the room. I'm not saying I'm one of them, but we can figure that out. And with that, and, and it just popped in my head, we could do something where the IVC project, no cops, but to move the Saddleback forward, cops. To me, that might be a, a better concept as well, kind of a hybrid combo. But I, I, I really want to make it clear, I'm not talking about just the urgent. I want to take care of them all. And, and I know I've said this before, this board and some of the people in this room, I've been there. I've lived in a van down by the river. Okay? I want to help them now.
I just, I just wanted, I just wanted to respond just by saying we hear you. And obviously, for us, at both of our colleges and district, we are prioritizing students' basic needs. I mean, President Hernandez sits on the statewide task force. Vice Chancellor Gable, I asked her, and she agreed to sit on a task force with OCBC on housing in Orange County. President Hernandez talked about partnering with the city. And so it's, as we know, I think we know as a collective, this is a systemic issue in Orange County. Many of us were at, you know, we've been looking at the data with regard to economic impact in, in Orange County, and we see a massive decrease in college-age students and a large increase in mature adults, right, in our region because of housing affordability. So housing affordability, just in Orange County alone, is a systemic problem. But that said, which I think what you're hearing our president say and, and me say, we hear you, and it is something that we will continue to explore, to figure out what we can do beyond what we're doing right now. But it's, it's just systemic in Orange County. It's a, it's a problem. And we'd love to be able to, to take care of more students in a, in a, in a better, greater way.
And again, because I kind of took a hit on this a few years back when we first started talking about this. I'm not talking about solving the homeless problem in Orange County. Talking about taking care of our students.
Of which we have over forty thousand, you know, forty thousand students. But I, I hear you. It's, it's a priority for all of us.
Okay. Other trustees with questions? No?
Okay, other trustees with questions? No? Trustee Dak.
I, I have some questions. I'd like to just basically second everything that Trustee Prendergast has shared. I, myself, am working in a school district up in Huntington Beach where our enrollment is going down so much that we've had to close a school. The board, their board just voted in the last week to close one of the middle schools. So, it is a county issue that we're encountering with, just even families being able to afford to live here. And I guess one of the questions I have is, the need is current and needed, but I also want to think about the future. So, my question is, I was just thinking back to those slides, I did not write the numbers down unfortunately, but students that needed housing far outweighed the number of beds we had planned at Saddleback and IBC. And I've, I've only been on the board for about, maybe next week will be a full year. But when these discussions were started, I, I think someone had mentioned that they were trying to conform with what the state grant plan was. And are there any constraints that would improve the number of beds we can do? Or anything along those lines? Because I'm, I'm thinking right now, like, four hundred beds for students to need, that's great. What's even better is to reach as many as we can that do need that. And I don't know if four hundred at Saddleback and three hundred and twenty at IBC meets that need.
So, there aren't any constraints on the number of beds, except for cost. So, each bed costs about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars on average. If we wanted to increase the size of the complexes that have been preliminarily programmed at this point in time, that hundred and seventeen million in financing that we would need would, you know, go up exponentially depending upon how many beds you wanted to add. It would also, with basic aid only, you know, if you're increasing the size of the complexes, that's going to push, you know, the projects out even further. We were trying to live within the means of the facilities master plan that is in existence today, as well as our projected cash flows, to try to get everything to mesh. So, it's definitely something we could run numbers, you know, to see what that would look like. But just preliminarily, it would push the projects out or, and/or increase the debt that we would have to issue.
Thank you. I guess, I just want to ask a clarifying question. So, when it came to the grant restrictions, that was mostly so that we weren't applying for a grant that was over a certain amount? And that, is that why we hit that numbers that we did, or were there other reasons?
I think we were, yeah, trying to create competitive grants. I think the other aspect of it is, you know, this is something new for both of the colleges. We've never had student housing before, so we wanted to start, I would say, on a moderate scale, rather than starting on a large scale to see that it would work. I mean, we could always, you know, a lot of the UC systems, you create one complex and then, you know, down the road, you add more beds because you have more need for it. So, that, you know, none of this would preclude the district from adding a second student housing project or a third student housing project down the road. So, it's just, we kind of looked at, yes, the SB one sixty-nine had, you know, eleven hundred students that said that they would, were interested if we had the extremely low rents. But we went with the, the moderate level of around two to four hundred students or that were interested and thinking that that was kind of, I don't know about sweet spot, but kind of the sweet spot of, of where we thought that the programming should go with it.
I guess I have an additional follow-up. I would, I would love to see what, if you were to run numbers, what to, cost would be to expand number of beds, maybe on a sliding scale. And then, I, I'm also open to the idea of having a dynamic rent roll where the students that are in most need get the most affordable option. And then, maybe students who are a little more capable have it as a sliding scale to where it becomes more financially viable. So, maybe just some more information on how expanding that number would affect costs in just sort of like a number form would, would be appreciated.
That's something that we could do. You know, the other thing, if we expand the beds, we would need to look at the number of employees that we had assigned and projected that would be needed. So, as Ted mentioned earlier, there were twelve FTE, full-time equivalent positions that we would need to add for Saddleback to cover the four hundred bed complex. And there were over nine full-time equivalent positions that we would be adding to cover the three hundred and twenty. So, if we increase the number of beds, we'll have to take a look at that personnel that would be required to run it. And the personnel that I'm referring to, that's additional policing staff. That's additional custodians, additional, you know, facilities maintenance workers, as well as residential life advisors and those types of things that would be needed in order to run a fully functioning twenty-four-seven student housing complex on the campus.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I have a, I have another one. Yeah, sure. Okay, I, I just have one, one more. So, are generally the plans as they are currently planned to have them open very late twenty twenties or, you know, twenty thirty, twenty thirty-one? Are we, are there any numbers on potential need at those times when that housing opens there? Because I just feel like Orange County in general, especially South Orange County, is going to get more expensive as time goes on. And I do know that the state does have a housing sort of law that passed recently that requires cities to be open to more housing or eliminate zoning, or something along those lines. But, and I know Irvine has been pretty good about it, but I'm not sure about where Mission Viejo is. And I don't know if anyone could speak to that and then what that housing need might be in the late twenty twenty.
I can say, you know, when we look at the K-12 projections for their population growth, it is on a declining scale. So, the K-12s are estimating that their population is going to be going down over the next several years. You know, inferring that many of the students that we have are coming from K-12, you know, we are struggling with our FTES as it is. You know, I think that was another reason that we didn't go up to a thousand beds, is trying to be a little bit more conservative and, and looking long-term of what do we think we would have, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, how many students? But Elliot, it looks like you want to say something as well.
About Mission Viejo. So, we have very close relationships with our friends at Mission Viejo, and we know where they stand on a lot of these issues. They are struggling to meet their requirements to produce affordable housing. So, they have a couple of plans in the works to develop affordable housing potentially in retail, where retail spaces sit right now, that I will not mention. But I will say, we've asked them very frankly, you know, because we would build affordable housing, would there be an advantage to you? And do you have funds that would therefore support our housing because of this advantage to you? One, there are no such funds available, I'm told. And two, for student-only housing, they did the research and found that they do not get the credit for that. There'd be a question about whether they would get the credit if it included employees. If our housing projects were open to employees, the last our conversation left off was they were going to ask their legal team to look and to see whether that would help them count with their numbers. And of course, we want to help our city, our hometown, even if there is no financial benefit to us. But that's where they sit right now. They are not, I'm so glad to hear that Irvine is doing well. We are not doing so well on the affordability front on Mission Viejo.
Thank you for your responses.
Trustee Jay.
This seems to be so far in the future that we don't know what the economy's gonna be like, what the country's gonna be like. It's kind of scary. We don't know if there'll be that many students. So, and you mentioning the thirty, thirty-two, I mean, it's just, the way things are going, you know, we don't know what the future's gonna bring. And it's just, to me, it's just hard to plan something so far in the future. And I don't know if I'll even be here. And it just seems too many shaky things to me, that things that aren't exactly stable, the financing, everything. I want to tell you, there's surveys, I never answer surveys. The reason why is I'm single. I don't want people to know too much about me. And boy, do you get the political stuff now. So, and I, I know quite a few people, they don't answer surveys because they want to remain private. So, I, to me, it's just, it's too shaky. And that's the way I feel.
Okay.
It's just too much up in the air.
Do you have anything, Trustee? No? You want to say anything? All right, can? Let me ask just a couple of questions. What financing model did Coast use?
P-three.
So, they did P-three. Okay. And their, the demand is like wildly, like fantastic. Supply is not meeting the demand at Coast.
They're, they're essentially full. I don't know how much is on their waiting list. I think they do have some vacant spots, but. Anne or Ted?
They're not all students there?
So, Orange Coast College is a hundred percent single student housing, and it is full, and it does have a waitlist.
Okay. Why did you say it's not students? It's not, there's not students that live there?
It's all students. Yeah, sorry, all.
They have a structure where if students, if their students won't, don't take it, then they can go to other college students, and then they can, I think, go to staff. So, it, it's kind of a tiered approach of who they can rent to.
And how many beds do they have?
Eight hundred and seventeen, or thereabouts.
So, they have eight hundred?
It, it, it is, you know, if you go on the website and look at the rents, affordability was not a chief concern when they took it to market. Yeah, I, I don't know what programs.
Students in their district? Any student in their district, right?
Uh, any student in, from the college and then the district, and as Ms. Gable said, there are tiers below that. I don't think they've ever had to try and go to the second tier because it's always been fully subscribed to students.
You mean second tier meaning affordable?
No, no, second tier in terms of eligible tenants, so that would be staff and faculty.
Do they offer any student housing rates or affordable housing rates? It's all market rate at Coast?
I think any assistance they give to students are student-based and not project-based because the rents are, are closer to market than.
Their foundation is heavily engaged with the housing, which is pretty typical. And so, their foundation does rent, I don't know how many beds, but for the Guardian scholars. So, and then, of course, financially.
Subsidize rent?
That's right.
The foundation?
They do.
Okay.
Not all the rents, but for some students, right.
Okay. And then, so how many other, it's, I know we're early in this game, but how many, any, any other basic aid districts have, have they developed any student housing? Any basic aid district in the state?
Sierra College has, is basic aid. They ha, they've had student housing for many, many years. And they are one of the ones that got one of the first grounds, that they just broke ground on construction for an additional housing project at Sierra. Napa is a basic aid district, so they will be.
How are they finding, I'm sorry, I know it's in the slide, but I forgot.
So, Napa, they had a bond, but then they also financed a piece of it as well.
The, the housing project at Napa is fully funded by private tax-exempt debt. There, there's no school contribution other than some limited credit support from the, from the college.
I see.
Oh, and, and excuse me, yes, we did apply for and receive SB one sixty-nine funds. It was thirty-one million dollars that essentially extend to about a hundred and forty-five beds that charge those SB one sixty-nine rents. First round.
What do we estimate, I mean, can, if you can go back, maybe we, so there's proposed four hundred beds at Saddleback, three hundred and what?
Three twenty.
At IBC, that's the supply. What do we estimate our demand to be?
So, it depended upon the rates. If we were charging the extremely low SB one sixty-nine rates, then the demand at IBC was about six hundred and fifty-eight and the demand at Saddleback was seven hundred and seventy.
That's it?
That was the second survey. So, that was the, you know, we did the broad survey and then we narrowed it down to the supplemental survey.
Does it seem low or does it seem right? I mean, it's what the survey says, I guess.
Well, with the, so with the supplemental survey, remember, that was only to the students who would be able to qualify for SB one sixty-nine. So, that was our low-income, uh, low-income students. You know, when, when, as Dr. Barnes mentioned, we have roughly twelve thousand students and this would be about, you know, fourteen hundred. So, you're looking at eleven, twelve percent of our low-income students would want housing. I, I don't know that that's too terribly low.
Well, I mean, so, we got a challenge. I mean, this is a really, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, the administrators got a copy of the PowerPoint, but the board members, none of the board members got the copy. So, what I would like is I would like someone to email the copy of the PowerPoint to the board members so that we can study it. That won't print up a lot of papers, but that will, and I'd like a key to the colored selections on this. Because this was advertised as a study session, not as a session that the board members had to make a decision. So, I, I'm not ready to make a decision yet. Thank you.
Well, this is, we're, we're not voting on anything tonight. This is a study session. So, and we may not be voting on anything soon, but I think the point is just to have an educational session.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
So, I was just gonna say that, obviously, now the cost of money, cost of capital is prohibitive to, I guess, the P-three option. I, I just, I don't know that we can afford this basic aid. I mean, I, I, just looking at pushing out other priority projects and I, I, and I just, I just don't know that we can afford it using just basic aid money. And then that gets into the issue of some debt, which this district's never done. And there's been sort of a long-held feeling against doing that. Obviously, you know, things change over time and it may, of all the things to go to debt for, perhaps the residence would, you know, student housing would be something they might be inclined to support. I think the numbers are small, though. I mean, the numbers are really small in terms of how many people, you know, four hundred beds and three hundred and twenty beds. So, that would be a concern to me. I kind of feel instinctively that it'd be some combination of market rate with student subsidized rates. To me, that, I mean, that's, I mean, that's what happens out in the development world, especially for cities to meet the arena numbers, like you mentioned. And so, it strikes me that would be the model probably to go to is that we'd have some combination of market rate with qualifying students getting some student rate. I don't know if you looked into that at all.
Well, that was kind of the, the dynamic rent roll.
Yeah, okay.
And even with the dynamic rent roll, we were still trying to keep it below market. But it was, you know, we kind of had created three tiers of what the rents would be. And, you know, I think we were, when we kind of looked at that, that was, I would say, attractive to us as well. Of having the, the various rents.
So, there was a recent, and to Trustee Prendergast points, I know, because I have a office/business in Santana. And, and so recently, the, they're building a streetcar that goes from Santana to Garden Grove. And it's disrupted a lot of the small businesses along Santana Boulevard and Fourth Street Market. If those who knows, people knows, know where that is. And so, they lost, some of the business lost like hundred, seventy-five or a hundred percent of their revenues. And so, they, long story short, they went to OCTA. OCTA said, "Go pound sand. We don't have any money for you." So, then, they went to the city of Santana, who's then given two rounds of grants to the businesses to supplement their in, loss of income as a result of the construction. So, I guess what I'm getting to, to, we've talked about a little. So, what process would be in place if we, for us to screen out and accept, you know, subsidy housing applications from students? How would we do that?
I think that would be something that we would need to work out. I mean, we very clearly can identify the students who are low-income. I think that would be something that we would need to work out. I mean, we very clearly can identify the students who are low income by the fact that they qualify either for, you know, Pell or get the California Promise Fee waiver. So from that standpoint, that would be something easily and readily available to identify those students. You know, I would say we would probably wanna work with our attorneys on how we would develop the other tiers of pricing that we could charge. Um, you know, it's really the, the district's purview, but you would wanna, to be, to make sure that you weren't setting things in a discriminatory manner or anything like that. So I think that's where we would need to work with legal counsel on what is allowed and how we could charge the various rent rates.
So reading the board, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm looking at your two questions here. One, does the board want us to move forward using only basic aid funds for student housing? I think the answer is we don't know. Um, and I think, um, does the board want us to explore issuing debt? We don't know.
Fair enough.
I mean, if we had to, if I had to get a sense, maybe some are sure on one or not the other. Unless you wanna chime in? On, on, just on these two questions.
I, I mean, I guess the, the question is, do, do you need the answer to these questions tonight? Or is this something we're gonna keep exploring, but again, now we're, we keep pushing it down and down? You know, and to, to trustee Jay's point, I'd like to get a couple of answers. What was the survey response rate? I mean, she's saying people don't answer surveys, but if we got.
We, um, I'd have to, I don't have the exact numbers here of how many responded, but we had the amount of responses required. What you do is you look at the enrollment of the school. And then you see how many responses you need from the enrollment of the school to get the less than the five percent margin of error.
Right.
And you leave that survey open till you achieve that. All the information, so we got about a two point four five. I'm going a bit from memory, but I'm close. When the survey goes out to the students, it is, um, we don't collect personal information. The name is not provided. So I don't know if that helps, um, with the response. The schools were very helpful too in advertising and promoting the survey. That makes a really big difference. But we did requ, um, we did achieve, um, what just from statistical, if I can say the word, um, requirements, what we would need to have the findings with integrity.
So I, I guess this goes. Well, okay, well, I guess this goes to trustee, well, go ahead.
So for IVC, the response rate was ninety and a half percent. And for Saddleback, the response rate was seven percent.
So I guess that goes to trustee Jamal's point, is these are low numbers, but are, are we not extrapolating the percent? I mean, yeah, if we only got a nine percent rate and there's only need for seven hundred, but really there's seven thousand students out there that need help. They, they just didn't answer the survey. That, to me, is significant.
You do, we do extrapolate out.
Okay.
So you take the responses and then, yes, you do extrapolate to what the total enrollment is at each college. So that's how the.
Okay.
When this survey, just as a point, when this survey went out, we've had all this construction cost escalation for years. I mean, we, you're modeling ten, fifteen percent. And then the rates were starting to climb a little bit too. So we put forth realistic public-private partnership rates.
I'm not talking about the rate, I'm talking about the number, the, the demand. I'm talking about.
Sure, yes.
I mean, like knowing what our demand is. I mean, that, that number is more important than anything else. And if we're just going, well, seven hundred people replied and that's our number. That's, that's wrong.
She's saying you have extrapolated for that? Yeah.
That's correct. It is extrapolated out.
Okay. And then I, I guess more to, to kind of help with trustee Jay's consternation. We've got, I mean, I've been on this board now thirteen years. There were projects that were started before I got here and are done. There are projects that were started since I've been here and are done. Things take time. So thirty, thirty-two, that sounds like a long way away, but so did ATAS. And it's done. And it's been open for a while. So that, to me, is not even close to a legitimate argument not to do this. Because we do that all the time. And that's how we operate in the education world. You've got to plan for the future. And it is uncertain. Things change. We already know that, you know, is there gonna be less need for brick and mortar because we're going more online? We've had that discussion too. Is our student body gonna change from eighteen to twenty-five year olds to fifty to sixty-five year olds? So we've had that conversation. So you can't operate by, well, that's too far away. I'm not gonna do it. That, that's just ridiculous. So I'm sorry, but that, that to me is not even close to a legitimate argument not to do this. As for answering these questions, I think I've made my point clear that I'm open to either one. Um, I don't think I necessarily agree, based on the numbers you showed us, that trustee Jamal's statement that we don't have the basic aid funds. We do. Um, it just matter, it just makes it, it makes it harder to do everything we wanna do. And I think I also agree that going into, or incurring debt is not ideal. And as I said, maybe there's something where with IVC, we don't. And to move up the Saddleback, we do. Some combination therein, but, um, yeah, I, I'm open to what, what the, the will of the board is on this. But I do not, I do not wanna stop this because we don't think we have the money. I, I don't think that's correct.
Let me just interject, cause my name was invoked. Um, uh, I didn't say we didn't have the money. I said, I'm not sure we can afford it based upon the other, uh, priorities and, and needs we have. And, and, but budgets are about priorities. If we made this a priority, we can afford it, of course. I mean, that's obvious. Does that mean that other priorities get, um, moved forward or even shelved? Yes, it does. But budgets, so do we have the money? Okay, okay, yes. And in absolute sense, we have the money and have the funding. But that does im, impact. And so what I meant about aff, affording it, yeah, it was about, can we do all the things we have to do and should do? And, and, and also provide, you know, the housing to the four hundred students at Saddleback. I mean, that, these are policy questions we're gonna have to answer. But go ahead.
Wait, have you finished? Have you finished?
Yeah.
Hi, I, I just wanna, um, mention something that, that we did, um, issue cops in the past. You probably, I don't know if you know that, but, but we did. Um, what it was, was at Saddleback and Irvine Valley College, there were no student service centers. And we really basically needed a student service center. And we weren't gonna be able to get funding from the state at that time because they were funding classroom buildings, not student service centers. So what we did is we took some of our land that we didn't need for Saddleback College and we, um, leased it to, uh, for like, I think ninety-nine years or fifty years, for, for quite some time to, uh, to, um, to someone that was building apartments on that. And we used the revenue stream for that to be able to have some of our own funding to be able to build our two student service centers. But what we did is we went to a, um, local, um, state senator, uh, Bill Campbell, who worked with us. And he was able to get funding for the two student service centers for the, from the state because we showed them that we could fund the, the rest of the funds ourselves from the revenue, uh, stream that we got from the cops. So it, we really was quite a successful, um, approach because we got our two students' service buildings, which have served the students since that time till now, and gave them a place to gather, gave them a place to, um, eat. You know, they, prior to that, they had the Roach Coach at Irvine Valley College. And then they had a cafeteria. Now they're going back to the Roach Coach again. So, so it, it, you know, tastes changed. But, but, um, we, you know, our feeling was, is that having a student service center is very important for retention of college students. Because anything you do that keep the students on the college campus, for instance, um, in, in any of the clubs, any of the, the newspaper, anything, or, or students just hanging out in the student service center would lead to retention. That's proven that if students have spent more time on the campus, I retain more. Just as probably, if they live on the campus, they're, they're likely to be retained more. So it was, that was a very successful cops. Um, and we paid off the debt and it, it worked out well. So that, that was one thing that we could go back and look into and see how that worked out. And maybe we could try that again possibly to.
May I say something about cops? Particularly, um, if there, if, if the board ends up deciding that might be a better way for Saddleback to go. Um, it would be important for me to know that you all understand the implication of that. And I, and I think you do, but I wanna reiterate something that was said. So anytime there's debt, the principal, at the very least, has to be paid back. The hundred million dollar principal on Saddleback's building would be paid back over forty years, which is two and a half million dollars per year. If you divide that by four hundred units, that's six thousand dollars per year that has to be charged in the rent to that unit, i.e. five hundred dollars a month on top of the rents that we started at with, with basic aid. Add to that the interest. At five percent interest, the current interest rate for cops, it's about the same amount being added again. So another two and a half million dollars divided by four hundred units comes out again to another five hundred dollars per month, per unit. So I just wanna go back to the initial goals of dealing with homelessness and dealing with imminent homelessness and housing insecurity and dealing with affordability. OCC never set out to do that. That was never their goal. It is our goal. And when we talk about financing, it is going to impair our ability to meet all of those goals. You may decide it's enough to meet some of them. Subsidize the poorer students and we'll take care of some of the homeless students. That's fine. We will take your direction. But I just wanna make sure you know, we will not be achieving the goals that we set out at the start of this conversation if we do that.
Well, well, that, that's probably true because the revenue stream would come from the rents from the students. We had a very different revenue stream. The revenue stream was from land that we weren't going to be using. And that was a constant revenue stream that would be, that we received for ninety-nine years. So it was a very good revenue stream for our district for all those years. A lot of money went to both colleges. So that was really good. This way, we would expect the, the revenue stream to be paid off by the rent from the students. And that's, that's not, that, that's, that's not as good. I mean, that would be much more difficult.
So can I get a clarification then? So are you recommending then that we not use the cops and delay when your building would be done?
That is a Hobson's choice for sure. Um, but I would say that if we had a temporary solution to handle that delay, to help the most needy students, the ones who are acutely homeless and perhaps those with housing insecurity, I would rather see us achieve what we want to in the long run, which is affordability, um, at the levels we've talked about, which is five seventy-five, seven seventy-five and nine seventy-five. That, to me, we would be doing a wealth of gold for forty years as opposed to what we will do with any sort of debt arrangement that gets us in two years sooner.
And I'm inclined to agree with that.
Okay. One more comment. Go trustee Jay.
Yes. Anne Marie, I remember you saying that this county's not gonna, um, do the bonds, vote for bonds. I mean, taxes are high enough, property taxes. And what do you think would be the chances of passing a bond here? I've heard you say that, uh, before that it wouldn't, we're not gonna try because it wouldn't pass.
Well, it's, yes, so it's my opinion. And, and looking at the history within the K-12 districts within our district, every bond that has been put forward, it's not every. So six of the seven bonds that have been put forward since twenty sixteen have failed.
That's twenty sixteen, that's.
And that, you know, so.
Six, seven, how many? I'm sorry.
Six of the seven bonds that were put forward by the K-12 district since twenty sixteen have failed.
That's not good.
The one that passed was in.
Our service area, you're talking about Orange County wide?
This is our district.
And how many from Capo? Four?
So, or, yeah, there's five.
No, they had most of them.
We have five. Laguna Beach, Newport Mesa, Tustin, Irvine, Capo and Saddleback Valley.
Capo had more than, they went out.
So Capo has failed every time they have gone out. Capo has never been able to pass a local bond for their K-12 district.
Sorry to interrupt, but they even split it up into certain portions of the district that would, would pay the additional property taxes.
Correct.
And, and if.
And it still failed.
Correct.
Yeah.
They failed, right?
Correct.
And I know that if you wanna do a bond, apparently everyone says that you have to get every board member to agree to it. If like one board member doesn't agree to it, it's very hard.
Well, it, it requires a two-thirds vote for it to pass. Um, I think what trustee Milchiker is referring to is, um, politically, it helps if you have a hundred percent support of your board members because your board members are then out in the community that they serve.
Yeah.
Advocating for the bond and, and providing the, the rationale for why the bond is needed and, and should be passed.
But those bonds just were, I don't think any of them were for student housing. I think they were all for, you know, general building upgrades and capital improvements.
Correct.
Which the public would be probably less inclined to support than student housing. I don't, I haven't seen any polling.
I don't know. Not sure, though.
I don't know. Well, then, then, then.
Historically on a statewide.
Have you guys seen any polling on it? Student housing versus bonds versus general obligation bonds to fix up, you know, buildings?
Other districts that have polled it, I know Cerritos polled it. When they polled for student housing, um, it was not favorable. Um, when they polled without student housing, it was favorable.
Then why is Capo losing?
Well, you're.
I guess.
It, it's the, I think, as, as trustee Milchiker referred to, property taxes are, you know, very high in the area. Well, property taxes, the percentage isn't high, but the assessed valuation of the homes is high. So the amount of money that our individual residents are paying in property taxes is high.
It is.
And to add additional property taxes with a general obligation bond, that's a very hard sell.
It is.
And, and people might be more interested in supporting their local school districts than the community college. I don't know, but who knows? Does anyone know?
We don't know enough yet. We don't have, we haven't done any polling or anything.
When you talk to political analysts, that's what they say, that, um, most individuals are more inclined to support their local K-12 districts and the public schools where their children attend
Right.
than they are for the local community college. No, that's not true in every area or not. Um.
I guess we, this is a different conversation, but I know that the, if we're talking, I guess it depends how the, the question would be written if we ever went out to ballot, if it deals with acute homelessness or housing insecurity versus just student housing in general.
Right.
And that, um, those measures might have better support if it's written like that.
Yeah, you would definitely need to poll it, you know, extensively, um, with the various language and various options to see, um, to do that.
Can I just jump in here and note that the, the slide did say that a bond was probably not gonna work? And so I think more of the conversation is gonna be on basic aid. And because of those high assessed property values, that's why we are a basic aid district. We're very fortunate in that we are a basic aid district and we have the resources to do things like this because those property taxes are so high. So I'm not sure if there's, I mean, from my perspective, we're in a very good position to do this. I don't know if, uh, you know, colleges in the less economically well-off areas of Los Angeles or the Bay Area would be able to even be contemplating doing something this, like this without a private partnership or without state funds. And we're in that position to do that. So I'd argue that this is, I, I don't think that basic aid usage should be taken off the table because, you know, we're one of a number of districts in the whole state that can do it. Whereas everyone else is kind of at the mercy of, you know, going out for a bond or a P three plan.
And, uh, just to piggyback, I would argue that because we get that extra, it's, it's as if we had a bond already. Like we, we already are getting quote unquote, extra money from the taxpayers to use wisely. And, and we are the trustees in charge of figuring out what's the best use of that money. And, I, I mean, I think it's been said, best use is student success. And there are different methods or measures of what helps student success. I get that, but I think this is a big one.
Okay. Any other questions?
All right, let, let's, um, think about a follow-up to this. And, um, I don't know what could be done in a, in another, you know, study session like this, or we could possibly have a presentation at the, at a board meeting or possible vote on something. But I mean, let's, let's figure out something, we can have a follow-up to this. Because I think there is a desire to do something.
And so let's, let's, I'll talk to the chancellor, and we'll we'll figure out a follow-up, appropriate follow-up.
Before we go, could we get like a sort of general sense of how we, the board, each board member feels about basic aid and then cops, because these are the questions, but it's kind of been sort of like iffy. So I don't know, I I just got, I get a good sense, or I don't have a good sense of where everyone else is on these two questions.
Okay.
Based on some of the newer, I'm I'm inclined to not do cops. I'm inclined to do basic aid, so that we can meet the goal of offering the best price for our students that need it. We can do the rolling rent or whatever. I think that's a great idea. And it just, and I know we're still talking about your question, but it just popped, what prevents us from just, like, buying the apartments behind IVC and becoming the landlord? I mean, like, is that illegal or?
They would have to put it up for sale. There is no termination clause in that lease. The lease expires in twenty seventy-five, wait, I have that here.
So the answer is no.
Correct, yes. September thirtieth, twenty seventy-five is when that lease terminates. And there is no termination clause, so we wouldn't, you know, if they ever decided that they wanted to try to sell it, there is a clause in the lease that gives us the right.
You're talking about these right over here.
Yes.
I was talking about IVC.
Oh, the apartments right next to IVC.
My brother used to live over there, I know.
Oh, I don't know about those.
I don't, just, never mind.
Well, I I will say, the one thing, if you wanted to buy an existing apartment complex, you would have to bring that apartment complex up to DSA standards, which would be very costly.
That's going to be costly, for sure.
They weren't built with those standards?
Let's keep, it's almost six o'clock. Terry, go ahead.
Well, that took the wind out of my balloon, because I was going to ask you to do that. And absolutely notice to cop. And I just don't know about basic aid funds. It's something I want our community also to be involved with, but.
Great point. Okay, trustee Milchiker.
I'd I'd like several things. I I'd like to get get the PowerPoint and and look at it and get, you know, get the key to it and and study it a bit. I think that would be really helpful. Just emailing it to us would be would be great, except you like the hard copy, right? It's okay, doesn't matter. And I feel that that I'd like to explore it more and 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 study the issue more. I'm not against it for sure. I'd also like to know, like, how do the, how do the constituent groups, how does, how do the college faculty and and staff feel about, you know, postponing some of our buildings that we're building for basic aid and building housing instead? I I'd like to get the feedback from them them as well, before I make a final decision. I think it should be like a joint decision from everyone.
All right, it's a good point. I mean, the faculty and other groups, I mean, because we are going, if we went with that option, other priorities will be shelved.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's something that needs to be considered. Trustee Jay.
I want to thank you. I think this has been a wonderful time to talk about it. I want to do it again. And and I do want the PowerPoint sent to me. Right now, I had I had a distant relative who's in college, a university, send me a report, which I haven't read. But we're opening ourselves to a lot of liability, drugs, drinking, and the latest, which astounded me, was the kids, the students are in ripping the smoke detectors off the walls and smoking marijuana. And this particular place, they have to have cops come in on the weekends in the halls. Lots of drugs, lots of drinking, and drugs everywhere. Now, if it was me and and I sent my kid to a place and this happened, I'd be very upset and probably sue the university for not a safe place for my kids to have an education. So I I am very interested in this. I think it's very interesting. But I think you're opening yourselves to a lot of problems. It was about a year ago that I talked, after a board meeting, I talked to one of the cops on our campus. And he, I don't know if it's the same way now, but he said, "We're all going to quit." They don't want to, and and if they quit, they can get, they're really good here at the community college, but they could probably get a job anywhere. So right now, I'm not in favor, but I'm open to it, and I really want to review this and study it. And this is just the starting.
Okay, so I'm make, so thank you for that. So my instinct was correct on the two questions. I don't think we're there yet as a board. Some people are, some people are not, but I I'm going to make an executive decision unless there's an objection. I'd like the administration to come back with a recommendation on how we deal with the acute homelessness of our students in the short term. Come back with a recommendation to us at the nearest possible board meeting on that. Because I think there's some consensus around something to do with the acute homelessness situation among our students, and then we need to come back with the, another session, either a study session or at our presentation at a board meeting and talk about the student housing.
Trustee Jamal, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So the nearest board meeting would be next week. May I ask that we do this in January, so we can have?
Let me, I guess at the nearest practicable board meeting, so.
So what could, could I make a a recommendation for consideration is we are starting up the planning process for the KIC and DRAC allocations and the reprioritization of our facilities' master plans now. Can the colleges have the discussion, based upon everything that we've heard here tonight, and put forward their recommendations for student housing within this next cycle? And then when we bring in April, the recommendation for the basic aid funding, then we would have kind of the the recommendation of where student housing would fall in play at that point in time?
Yes, you're talking about student housing, or are you talking about acute home, dealing with the acute homelessness? Because there's two separate issues.
Right, yeah, I'm talking about student housing. We would still do the acute homelessness as one way, but have the colleges.
The answer, I think, is yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right, okay. Any, we had no public comment. Any public comment? Based on this? All right. We are adjourned, we are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.